Oh, you're gonna have to make that a little bigger. All right, let's go here. Let me smooth the picture out of the way. All right, it is now six oh six and my name is David Baraducci, Chair of the Four Point Channel Landmark District Commission. And I'm calling to order this hearing on, what is it, Thursday, February thirteen, twenty twenty five? And present are Commissioners Umphunor, Brody, and myself, of course. Rachel Erickson is the Commission Staff and she's also on the Zoom call. So today, the Commission will be holding a public hearing to review applications in accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Board spending certain provisions of the open meeting law, including the March twenty nine, twenty twenty three amendment extending the suspension of these provisions until March thirty one, twenty twenty five. We're conducting this meeting online to ensure public access to the deliberations of the Four Point Channel Landmark District Commission. The public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. This hearing is being recorded. All further conversations between Commissioners should be audibles with public attendance until the hearing has adjourned. And at this point, we ask if there's anyone from the media or any elected officials on the call to identify yourselves by raising your hand in the Zoom platform and just state your name and your title and affiliation.
Okay, not seeing anyone.
Nothing? Okay, so members of the public, when we do open it up for public comment, members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions and provide comment on the application and the discussion. To do so, please raise your hand in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. And I'll repeat these instructions when we open up public comment. All right, so the agenda tonight is two design review applications. One is application two five point zero four six six, and this is three thirty two Congress Street. And the second is application two five point zero five two one. And this is regarding two fifty nine to two sixty seven Summer Street. There is administrative reviews that I'll read in. And that's two five point zero five seven three, and that's five Neco Street. And two five point zero five three one, two sixty six Summer Street. And then we'll vote on the accept the January twenty third meeting minutes, staff updates, and adjournment. Okay. So the first item is, again, application two five point zero four six six, and it's three thirty two Congress Street. And the proposed work is replace a single door, single entry door, replace two fixed windows with accordion style operable windows, paint the pilasters proportion of the cornice and entry doors, install three cornice light fixtures, install blade sign at the far left pilaster, install a visual letter sign as affixed to the LED raceway center on two windows, install vinyl window decals at the entry door, and this is a continuation from the December twelve, twenty twenty four hearing. So if the applicant can introduce yourselves and then get started.
Yes, good evening. My name is Daniel Brennan with DPP Design Consultants. I'm a permit and license consultant. I'm also, we have Sharif and probably mid bean from Ella Fantine, the restaurant owner. I'm not sure if Robert's on our architect. But we did present to you a few weeks back and took the comments into consideration and adjusted our proposal. So just to kind of go back over what we're proposing is painting the ground level floor pilasters in the cornice above a darker coffee brown. And our other, and also replace the storefront windows with some accordion style windows, keeping the transom window above. And our proposal originally was to replace the single entrance door with two wooden doors. And since then, we've adjusted that to be storefront doors that match the existing. But we are still proposing basically shifting, shifting over the existing door on the left and creating a side light and adding another door at the other side of the mullion. That's important for our flow in and out of the restaurant. And I think it would, the way we've adjusted the doors, it kind of fits in a bit more with the symmetry, even though it's not symmetrical. Another piece that we adjusted is our wordmark sign on the cornice that's on a raceway. We centered it more on the, the structure that's painted rather than a piece of the cornice to make it more centered on the sign band, if you will. Other parts of the project that were reviewed last time were installing these three wall sconces on each pilaster and one on the left hand side, just on the, on the brick. And also above that brick, install a blade sign as well. I think it's just over three feet projecting and I think two feet tall. That's basically the scope of, oh, and we also have some small decal that says Ella Fantine that's going on our entrance doors, just to kind of distinguish what the correct doors are to enter into our establishment. Yes, that's, that's our proposal.
Uh, okay, so. And I'm at a little disadvantage because I'm on my phone, so I can't, some of this writing is a little small here. But so the one at the bottom is what you're now proposing?
Correct. Yep. And the top one is the existing rendering.
Of what exists now?
Correct.
All right, can you, did you, can you go back to having showing both of them? Yeah. Um. All right, I'm, I'm, so the top one is what exists currently?
Correct, yeah.
And I'm trying to recap a little bit of what we talked, what we talked about at the last hearing, what we asked for.
So the last hearing, we're proposing wooden doors that
Right.
quite as tall also as the existing doors, so
Yeah.
We were going back and forth, getting just a larger wooden door. But in discussions with the landlord ownership, they decided that they prefer us to just match what's existing. So that's what we've done. And the other comment from the board last time was the location of our letter sign being more centered on the painted area rather than, you know, some of the corners.
All right. And so yours, the restaurant is occupying the left half of this facade, is that right?
Yeah, we're, we're just on the left hand side, but we wanted to do this painting and, you know, it wouldn't, it wouldn't look right if we only did our side. So landlord management agreed to allow us to paint the entire first floor level and definitely would love.
Yeah, yeah, I, I see. And then, so I guess I thought one of the things that we had sort of stressed, I mean, this is not an original, you know, storefront, so that. But I thought we were talking more about keeping the symmetry somehow of what's there in terms of, you know, it's a very symmetrical facade. And what you're proposing isn't. I mean, you're, you're completely detracting from that. I just didn't, I thought that was not what we were looking for. And, and, and as far as the door, did we, we had some other suggestions for the door, didn't we? I, 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 Rachel, can, do you know, I'm trying to recap in my head what we, what was presented back in December? And, and what our comments were.
Wasn't one of the, the gist of it to, to have that door centered in the kind of, you know, that opening under the, under the three thirty two? I thought that was sort of one of the things we were going for.
Well, something, because the door that's on, on the right hand side door, what is that one gonna serve as?
I believe that's a lobby that goes to the other spaces.
All right, so that's gonna remain because that's, that side of the building is not changing. And so you're introducing a new restaurant. I still am not sure why you need two doors. What, what's the, what's the point of that?
Good evening, this is Sharif Farag. I'm the, my wife and I are the owners of Elephantine. I just, we have a current location that is smaller than this establishment and it only has a single door. And one of the challenges that we have consistently run into is just the flow of traffic with that single door. And, and so we proposed the double door starting in the December meeting, partly to facilitate the flow of traffic in and out of our establishment, but also to ensure that we're not creating any type of obstruction at the sidewalk or, or the, the entrance exit way of the building. I, I believe the conversation last, the December meeting centered around how we could center the double doors, given that we don't have, like, our space only takes up a portion of that entryway and the door on the far right is just a single door.
I think one of the things we discussed to that end was just ensuring that the doors all match the same height. We had proposed wooden doors that were, I think, a foot or two shorter. And then, you know, also in pursuant, pursuing of the symmetry, we, we think glass doors probably fit in better. And then just, I, I think, I believe we talked about this last time, but just this whole entrance area is recessed a few feet back from the storefront of the space. So I think that also came up last time as possibly being slightly less concerning to the overall sort of symmetry of the storefront.
Mm hmm, mm hmm. But last time, did you present these bi-folding windows or, or was, is this a new introduction here?
The bi-fold windows were presented at the last hearing.
They were?
Yeah.
Okay.
There, from the last hearing, there was sort of two, I think, main comments that facilitated or necessitated the continuance. The first was the centering of the lettering above the windows on the, on the building relative to the operable windows. And then the second one was, what could we do to try to center the doors in the lobby way? Given that it's not exactly, you know, our, the entire lobby or entranceway isn't the space that we'll be renting.
Yeah, I can confirm that, David, those were the two pieces you asked them to look into.
Yeah, all right, all right. Okay, can we go back to the renderings? Yeah, let's see that for a second. So you're putting three new fixtures, how? And then did you have a close up of these light fixtures? Yeah, okay.
And that is intended to have some parallel design to the blade sign. The work that we'll be doing there is to create kind of like a wavy block iron.
Right. Yeah, yeah, all right. I mean, I, I can see how this can, uh, it can work based on the fact that the, the entry is recessed and there's going to be some shadowing in there and I'm just trying to. Yeah. So I guess what I'm wondering too is, so you decided to put the two, the two doors together and then you use the center line of the whole opening and then you put the two next to each other that way. I wonder if, did you look at keeping the door, the, the, the door alignment on, on the left and starting from that point and having the double door that way so that at least there's a bit of a match to the other door on the opposite end there?
We were trying to maintain the, the transient windows kind of above the doors that divides that section into thirds. And so we were trying to maintain that visual of the
Yeah, yeah, I see what you're saying. Yeah, okay, so you took the center, the one third point, and then you made that the center of the two doors.
So effectively, the space that is ours are the two thirds to the left. So the, that seemed like a reasonable approach was to maintain the three, the third above the transient windows and then center the two doors on that, but certainly open to feedback.
Yeah, all right, all right, well, I'd be interested in what the other commissioners have to say, so if you want to.
And can we just have clarification that the mullion color that is around the perimeters of the door will match the same coffee brown that is on the building? It's rendered and the rendering is gray. And I, I can understand perhaps why for the rendering that's done, you're trying to distinguish that, those two planes. But in the photograph on the right, in this frame, it appears to match the coffee brown. So will that be the, the same coffee brown color as the, as the rest of the trim?
Yes, the intent is to make all the colors matching. So our apologies for not doing that.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to understand. I would say I, I was the one who was highlighting, you know, with the other commissioners, the verity of the name of the establishment. And that appears to be resolved for my part. So just taking that off the top. The other pieces, my memory of the previous application is that the doors were quite heavy wood, opaque, and just visually did not continuity of this regular rhythm that is continuing both in this plane, but also the foreground plane. I, I actually liked the aesthetic of those other doors, but I agreed with the other commissioners that they did feel out of place relative to the rest of this glass facade. So I'm understanding and agree with David's comments around the symmetry. I also think that there's a little bit of a challenge of how to get that to work in this two thirds, one third structure. And I think that the setback, the darkening of it, does make it recede in a way that starts to de-emphasize it. But I would just ask
Well, it's, it's sort, yeah, Ray, we're sort of like the, the, the design mistake was made, you know, when they, when they did the initial or whenever the last renovation was with that door on the right. The door on the right is kind of like hanging in space and it doesn't, it's not really symmetrical to anything in, in that
And it's not even centered within its third
Yeah, space, exactly, so
Yeah, it's almost as if that door was shifting to the left.
They just slapped it in there. So, so I think the way this is, this design has come out is, at least is, is created some order in that left, you know, two thirds side of, side of the, of the facade. And I like, I like how the, the lettering has come out for the main sign. My only sort of question at this point is the, the decals, I, I could see the point of putting those on the entry doors. I think that would be, given kind of the proportions of this, of this facade that left, left hand side, that would probably be enough signage. I, I wouldn't try to sort of slap some more of them on the, on the folding windows as well. That would be my only sort of suggestion. I don't know how the other commissioners feel about that.
Yeah, this, this is Sharif. Again, that's, we actually agree with that. So the, the signage should just be on the doors, not, not on the bi-folding windows or, or anything else. It's really
Yeah, you have, you have a blade sign, you have the, you know, the big sign over, over the, you know, the, the entrance on the, or the, sort of the openings on the left. Couple of decals on the entry doors to make sure people know, oh yeah, that's where we're going in.
Yeah.
And that, you know, and that, that's kind of feels to me like that's sufficient.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, and the only thing I would say is just making sure that in your lighting of this entryway, that if you're clipping the light and you're choosing a, an IES pattern with the, with fixtures that is overhead, that you're actually not casting light on. The intent is to allow this entire facade that has this asymmetry problem to recede. I would just flag that being careful about the kind of fixture and bulb that you choose for that overhead light, that you're not lighting it, that if you're lighting it, you're lighting the entryway from the floor up and not further emphasizing this kind of strange asymmetrical anomaly that we're trying to de-emphasize because of our acknowledgement that you can't really fully resolve it if you don't control the other side of the door.
Right, yeah. Yeah, and so the light, are you speaking of the fixtures, the wall mounted sconces?
Well, I'm just saying that, that we don't have clarity on how, we're looking at a daytime photograph
Yeah.
meeting, and I think that all is fine and it, it definitely passes from my perspective. Explanation, but when we look at this in nighttime and things begin being backlit and lit and you're catching, catching those specular highlights on each of those mullions, that the commitment or the consensus of this group seems to be, let's de-emphasize that area of the facade to obscure that this, this symmetry problem is likely to not be fully resolved.
Right, yeah. Okay, and then in, in the recessed entry itself, I assume there's downlights in, mounted in the ceiling above or something and?
Yes, there are existing mountain lights, but we were not going to change what was existing there, so.
So that will be, that space will be sort of evenly lit inside that recess. Then you're not gonna have any, like, two fixtures over your door and one on the other side or so. Okay, so that'll, yeah, so that'll
Even in somewhat dark, hopefully.
Yeah.
Well, understand, entryway needs to be lit and people need to be able to come and go and see where they're going and so on, but not overemphasizing, you know, what we're, what I think we're, I don't want to speak for the other commissioners, but prepared to accept that you don't have control over your, over your neighbor's door alignment. And therefore you have limited means to create the symmetry.
Yep, okay. All right, so if we, if the, we don't have, the commissioners don't have any other comments, we can open it up for the public at this point?
Sure.
Oops. And
Sorry, David, I don't know why it's up here.
Yeah, all right, I could see, sorry. Okay, perfect. Members of the public, when I have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on the application and discussion, to do so, please raise your hand via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling and you cannot, cannot use the platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand or you can send your questions to staff via email at fourpointldc@boston.gov.
One raised hand?
There is, okay.
Good evening, Commissioner Sarah McCammon, Four Point resident. And I apologize, I was not at the December landmark meeting and if this had already been discussed and approved. But I'm a little looking for clarity on, if we go back to a slide that shows the front lane, the, the, the fact that I can see where Alfantine has, you know, their dotted line, that that's their portion of the building. And I, and I totally recognize the oddity of it. But I'm curious on why we're going, painting brown way across the entire building and why we're not just keeping it the gray? Because I think that as people are approaching the establishment, they're gonna think that it's and when a new tenant moves into the single door and the two right hand windows, you know, they're gonna wanna make it look whatever their brand and identity is. So I was just curious if someone could talk to a look about why the decision was made to do, I think, you know, it's pretty with the chocolate brown, but the sort of grayish color, shall we say it, of the upper floors is what happens through the, the entire building, if you look at the building and its entire, you know, entirety of facade. So if there could just be a little conversation about how that came to be and how we see it working and going forward. And we're very excited, by the way, to have Alfantine open, so that would be my ending comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so I guess the question to, to answer then is, what's the reasoning behind wanting to paint that whole stripe all the way across? And then if there, whatever happens on the other side, on the right hand side of the building, I think we would want to make sure that that tenant doesn't decide, oh, I want my half of this upper sign band to be, you know, purple or something, you know? So it's got to stay, if you're gonna paint it this brown, chocolate brown all the way across, then that's what it has to remain as all the ways, regardless of who comes into that other space. They'll have to just work with that. That's at least my, my opinion and, and I think we want to emphasize that. Otherwise, that, that we just go back to the gray and, and keep it that way. So, so in other words, either all or nothing, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I agree with that. My understanding, and, and the proponent can clarify this, but the space that is on the right is a lobby and that is being used as a circle in area, and so it's not likely to be tenanted, it's access, I believe, for the upper floors. And so understanding from the presentation today is that the owner has conceded to those changes to try to, I guess, support the, the establishment's presence.
Rayber is, Rayber is correct. That's, that area to the right hand side is a lobby that serves the upper floors. Sort of in the conversations with, prior to our December meeting, both with the landlord as well as staff, the preference was to kind of make the entire building ground level the, the chocolate brown color. But we are certainly open if, if the advisement of the commission is to only paint on the side.
Well, and, and you know, to be honest, I think some of the discussion in December was around, you know, that it's, it's not a particularly pretty facade to begin with. It's, it's just looking a little tired and, and using a, a bit of a departure for a color in this chocolate brown is a way to kind of, I don't know, spruce it up, make it a little livelier. It just seemed, seemed to us at, at the time and, and really now seeing this rendering with the symmetry and, you know, it, it looks exceptionally, possibly a little bit odd, but it, but it, from a design standpoint, I don't think there's any way around it to, to make this, you know, to kind of bring this into the 21st century a little bit.
Yeah, and you've got a great analogous color thing going on here with the warm chocolate brown and the color and the warm gold of the, the lettering, and so it's all living in this universe. And I think it's got a nice old, old world charm to it in a contemporary vernacular. I would
There you go.
Saying that
Well said.
It lives well in both those years. And I hope others in the neighborhood will emulate it as they bring their, their proposals forward to us for consideration.
Also, I just add, Sarah, thank you for the kind words. We're very excited to join the neighborhood.
All right, great.
David, Sarah has her re-raised. I'm sorry, Sarah has her hand re-raised.
All right.
Good, Sarah.
Thank you, Rachel. Just a quick follow up. In light of that conversation, and I really appreciate understanding that that is not to be rented out to a different tenant, is there any thought of continuing the sconces along? Just to kind of balance, you've got the sconces on the left hand side to continue them on the right hand side. I don't mean to add any different additional expense, but it just, it occurred to me that if we, if, if this is gonna read as sort of a little bit more like one, that continuing those sconces would be maybe a nice way to marry it all together.
Yeah, it's a good, I mean, certainly that would help with the, I, I'd, I'd like to hear what the applicant has to say about that. Are you, would that be something that you would be willing to do or what? I don't know what the owner of the building is feeling about that either, so.
That would, we are open to it, of course. We, we, we would need to go back to the owner of the building and confer with that because that is obviously not our space.
Yeah.
It was never something that was proposed.
Okay.
There, there was some thinking to kind of go back to Sarah's original point around, you know, why paint the whole area if only part of it is ours, that the light fixtures would be the, the item that would denote what is sort of our area versus what is just a lobby of, of the other side of the building as well as the operable windows and, and the signage. So that was a bit of the thinking that went into it. But again, certainly open to, to the suggestion of the commission and, and how you'd like us to proceed on this.
I mean, I, I, I see what you're saying. I, to me, I, I'm not, you know, I, I don't feel strongly about having it go all the way across. And if this, it will be a sort of subtle way of, you know, showing that this is the restaurant, these two, first two bays here and the rest is, you know, something else. And the, you know, the light fixtures are not any, are not really that large and showy. So it's a kind of a subtle gesture. So I don't, if the other commissioners feel that they'd like to see it go all the way across, that's fine.
I see it as an accent, really. And I see it as kind of in accordance with the signage as well. I will say I'm agnostic on the point. I mean, if you feel compelled to, to put in additional fixtures and there's, that, that raises the visibility establishment such that you can be successful at that location. We, we want you to be successful at this location, so I would be completely fine with that. But obviously, understanding that you would need to get owner approval for that. I do like the charm of the scale of it, I just have to say, I think that the um the the uh, one of the things that's really nice about this sort of facade and the way that you're, you know, going to be kind of coming in here is it's got a, it's got a kind of scale to it that is very charming. And once you've taken over the whole facade, it's a bit more of of a of a big beast of a of a plate. But these are small comments, so I I, you know, I'm fine, really, whatever you would you would like. The owner would like to have that. Then, you know, I'm happy to prove approve an application that has a proviso that gives you that flexibility.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I agree. I think it's uh, I think we could leave it um as it is, and if 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 the applicant feels that um to me, it seems like you you might if you might want to approach the owner and say, you know, if you want to see the whole building unified, you know, it would add it would certainly add some more curb appeal to the building and maybe they'll pay for it, you know, so I guess it's up to you. Uh, I I don't feel like we want to, as a commission, then to to insist on it being, um, you know, all the way across, so.
I agree, I agree here.
Okay, all right. So if that's it for public comment, we will close that portion, this portion of the um hearing and then uh entertain a a motion.
This is relatively straightforward, while I'll move to accept the proposal as presented.
Okay, and second?
I will second Tom.
All right. Okay, uh, so Commissioner Umfenor.
Yes.
Rhodey.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Congratulations.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, next is uh application two five point zero five two one. And uh the address is uh two fifty-nine to two sixty-seven Summer Street. Uh, and again, the work is uh selective updates to the southern facade, replacing one column of masonry window infills with historic window spanning floors one through eight, replace one column of louvers on floors two through eight, remove the infill uh of three at-grade windows and replace them with historic windows, and this is a continuation from the uh January twenty-third hearing. So the applicant can introduce yourselves, please, and and get started.
Go ahead and raise your hand if I haven't unmuted you yet.
I don't know, I think I'm, I think I'm good. Um. Yeah. Good evening, Commissioners, um, Chad Willem with Dallas Architects. Um, I have both Adam Burns and John Beatty from Boston Pinnacle Properties here, as well as Michael Flash from Epsilon Associates. So we'll kind of jump right into kind of the big uh piece of discussion from the meeting on the twenty-third, um, which was the openings where the existing movers were moving up the facade. Uh, so we kind of took a step back, took into account all the comments from from the previous meeting, um, and kind of kind of took a little bit of a design change here from what we had before, we simplified the the door openings, ended up the styles and removed the transoms from the top, which were very different from what was there historically. Um, the other big piece here is we were showing a kind of more wrought iron style guardrail in front of those openings, and we've changed those to to have sort of a large horizontal round bar at the approximate height of what was shown historically. In order to try to try to maximize that aesthetic underneath, we've used uh glass to create the guard. Um, so the top here, you'll see a rendering. What you're seeing there a little bit on the lower one is a lot of reflection, um, and then, but just above it is the same same exact thing, so you're seeing the transparency that happens there with the glass. So really just highlighting that hor- that one horizontal rail from the historic images and then kind of pushing everything back as far as we can into those existing openings.
Okay, Chad, are there operable windows?
I'm sorry. Yeah, so that these are, these are intended to be Julia balcony doors, so they would open in.
In, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think this is great. So then that um that uh is that a what, a four-inch pipe or something, or?
I think it's closer to a six-inch.
Oh, is it that big? Okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm showing there, and that's what I'm trying to assess from that image.
All right, and then um saying that that's a glass infill then all the way down, you don't even, you know, really know it's there, so I think that's um, this is going to be nice, it'll be a a nice repetition of that uh same form all the way up. Okay, and I like the idea of the transom not being there, I think that's good. So uh the other commissioners have any thoughts?
And and this is just to be clear, the dotted line in your center center, lower-left diagram, rep- pipe, the six-inch pipe, so we're talking about two planes of glass that go from top to bottom. And um I mean, it's so simple, it's amazing from our previous conversation, you guys, I think, have really boiled it down and and created a good repeating geometric form that ostensibly is going to what has been there historically. It's quite uh quite sort of handsome and elegant in its simplicity.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. All right, and uh so if that's it, then um in terms of comments from the commissioners, we can open that up to public comment. And uh okay, here we go. So members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on the application and discussion to do, so please raise your hand via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand, or you can send your questions to staff via email at fourpointldc@boston.gov.
Hey, I did not receive any written comment, and I'm not seeing any raised hands.
Okay, so that's great. We'll uh close public comment period then and uh entertain a motion.
Raver, you go this time.
I would motion to application as submitted.
Okay, second.
I will second that.
Okay. Do you guys think, though, that you could consider um adding provisos for window mockups, so I can make sure that the color of the new windows matches the existing windows? Um, if you don't want to, that's fine, but I would uh encourage you to consider.
When you say mockup, what do you mean? You you want to, you would want to?
I want to see the color on site of the window and see if it matches the four-point green of the existing windows.
Right.
All right.
Windows that are already in place, it's not, many of those windows will not be touched, and so the onsite is going to match what is in the existing condition, is that right, Rachel?
Yeah, and I'd also like them to send final cut sheets for everything, showing the materials, um, the dimensions. Um, it's an important record for us to have as well.
Yeah, I'm happy to.
I think you, uh, someone raised that in the in the last meeting, too, didn't didn't worry about the cut sheets and so forth, so I seem to remember that. Just a special. I I would, I would differ with both of those suggestions.
So I would revise my motion, I'm sorry, David, do you have another comment?
Yeah, I just to pause for, I just want to um remind myself here, is are the doors, those new doors, are they going to be wood or or metal?
So those, as shown, are aluminums, they'd be a storefront due to the the height of that opening as well.
All right, so it'll be the color then would be just an anodized aluminum, so yeah, it's important that we then you know, see the color, because we're going to be probably limited on what choices the the standard choices are for that aluminum, and and we're going to want to make sure that that it does match. All right, and then the paint that uh you're you're going to paint that six-inch diameter pipe? And so again, the paint, the paint color, you know, we'll have remand that to staff as well for final approval. So that'll be if that's okay to put in the motion.
I would revise my motion to be approving the application as submitted with the proviso that cut sheets are provided to staff and that color match is remanded to staff. And a mockup is produced for specific to be reviewed by staff prior to um
Great.
To construction. Is that helpful, Rachel, for you in terms of your coverage?
Yes, thank you very much.
All right, and second?
I will second that revised
All right.
Approval.
All right, so uh Commissioner Umfenor.
Yes.
Rhodey.
Vote yes.
And I vote yes. All right, great, thank you very much. This is uh much improved, uh, I'm uh, I'll be excited to see the finished product.
Thanks for being so comments, and uh we're looking forward to reviewing this sign, the illuminated sign when you um when you're when you're at that phase, and thanks for bringing residential to the four-point neighborhood.
Yay.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So this is a, these are, these are two administrative reviews coming forward, not not um okay, so these are, uh, the first one is the application two five point zero five seven three, and it's at five Neco Street, and it's regarding installation of storefront and blade signage for backyard fitness, uh, that includes halo-lit channel letters and logo. Okay, the rest is crossed out, so, okay. Then, yeah, so that's the, so we'll, that's the first one, then we're going to get that presented. Is that is this a administrative review?
These are admin, David, so I've already reviewed them.
Oh, you've already, okay, I'm sorry, I'm confusing the two things here. I thought that we were going to be getting a
Nope.
Presentation. So that's the first one is, and the second one is application two five point zero five three one, and this is a two sixty-six Summer Street, and it's regarding installation of two new sixteen-inch round, non-illuminated blade signs. Uh, installation of decal on building, uh, entry door. Um, and this was moved from design review um by the staff, so these are, again, to reiterate, these are two applications that came before the staff, and it the staff had approved them um for their adherence to the standards and criteria, and so the vote, uh, the motion would be to accept the staff's uh acceptance of these two uh applications.
Yeah, I just have one question, Rachel, this uh five Neco uh administrative review is in conformance with the work that we approved for all the signage in the fall, is that right?
Yep, our, the proposed signage meets the master plan requirements that you guys approved.
Fantastic.
And that's it.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yep.
All right, so that the the motion is made, and then we need a second.
I'll second that.
All right, uh, Commissioner Umfenor.
Yes.
Rhodey.
Vote yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you, Rachel.
All right. Next is the ratification of the January twenty-third public hearing minutes. If uh everyone is okay with the with the minutes as they were presented, um we I can entertain a motion to accept them.
So moved.
All right, and second?
Seconded.
All right, we'll do a voice uh vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Opposed, none. Okay. Great. And uh, this is uh any staff updates, Rachel? So, oh, we're have, what is that, what is that, that you said? We have three new commissioners coming in the next hearing?
That's right, what did you say?
Three, count them.
I wish.
Raver, David, and Tom.
I see them during the right here.
This is the same three musketeers.
The meetings are very efficient, gentlemen, I have to tell you, they're very efficient. To get our comments, we, Rachel, it's the very efficient meetings, you know?
Pro, I I appreciate.
I do have to say, in both of the cases of these projects, in both cases, having although perhaps we were being persistently detail-oriented, both applications came back with much stronger work in the second round. And that was great to do that, and particularly on this second application, where it was such a walking culture.
Yeah, no, I I think it's going to be great, and I like the idea of those uh, uh, the glass um infill, because that's going to be a bit of a contemporary expression, but yet it's still going to represent the historic uh feel um of it being open, so I think it's going to be great.
Yeah.
All right.
Right.
If there are no other updates, uh, Rachel?
No, unfortunately, I have no commissioner updates. Um, I feel like we haven't had anything going on in that regard. But I'm sure it will be back up and ready. Oh, oh, I do have the update, actually, we have a new uh executive director, Liz Sherva.
Oh. Oh, really? Boy, I didn't know that.
Sorry about that, yes, yeah, yeah, we finally um have replacement, um, Roseanne Foley is the one who formerly held that position. Um, and Liz will be starting on March second. Um, she mainly will be running BLC hearings, so um I don't think you guys will really, well, David, you will be a BLC, but I don't think you guys will have too much interaction with her, but we're really excited. She came um on Wednesday, um, we had lunch with her. Um, so that was very exciting.
What's her background, uh, just really quick?
Um, so she was at, has been at MHC for a really long time, um, working in like government relations position of some kind, I can't remember off the top of um, and then I know her, she has a preservation degree from BU.
Yeah, nice, great, nice, all right.
There was
Good.
The March twenty twenty five is the date at which the authorization for remote meetings expires, or am I wrong by my by a year?
You're you're not, um, the expiration is at the end of March. Um, we will probably find out about a week before what they're choosing to do, so it won't affect our March hearing at all. Um, because we meet earlier in the month, um, and then the second I know or have any clue, I'll let you guys know. Um, because back in twenty twenty three or two, I forget which year, when they extended it, it was like literally like right before the deadline. Probably be similar.
Obviously, I don't want the commissioners, but I'll say it makes it exceptionally easy to contribute as a commissioner by being remote. Um, I do understand the city wants to try to get people back downtown, but um extent that that comment means anything, uh, it 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 really is a pleasure to serve on the commission because of the prep work that you do and the fact that we can just dial in.
Yeah, I I definitely feel it will be uh, it'll be a big disadvantage if we have to go back um to meeting at City Hall. But anyway, well, whatever happens.
Yeah.
So.
I'll let you guys know as soon.
We we've all gotten really spoiled, but.
Does it look, does it look like? Does it look like uh it's going to go one way or another, Rachel, or what?
I, no, honestly, David, it's really unclear. We haven't been really given any like hints. Um, there is some talk of hybrid, which um I kind of feel like is the worst of both worlds.
Right.
Yeah.
It'd be a lot of logistics, but we'll see, we'll see what happens.
So who's the one, who makes that decision? Who who's the one that makes the decision?
The state makes that call, I think.
Oh, the state, oh, okay.
You know, actually, if I go to the start of the hearing, um, the slide my computer just froze on me, um, the slide at the start actually states um why we can have that um
Okay, yeah.
Virtual hearing.
Yeah, it was, okay, yeah, with the dates that um, so it all has to come from a state level then, um, all right. Well, we'll see what happens, and I hope it uh, I hope it does stay the same, though, it's become very easy, um, and I think it's just as um uh efficient, so uh, at first, I I didn't agree, at first, I wanted it to
Right.
go back to City Hall, but um
Yeah.
No. So, yeah, okay, here it is here.
Maybe, maybe, maybe once a quarter, we could, we could do it in person.
Yeah.
It can also
Once a year.
Yeah.
Encourages participation from constituents who otherwise would certainly never be able to attend these hearings if it means going across the city to City Hall as well. I also am empathetic to the point that town and and the city generally needs to continue to have a motivation for people being there geographically and in person, but um, you know, anyway.
It's not, it's not us.
Yeah, just not us, we're just commissioners.
You're volunteers.
You think we're going to do, we think we're going to go buy a thing.
Make the applicant, make the applicant come in in physically, and we can still do it from our living room.
No, no.
That would be the best of all worlds, you know?
If anything, I'm sure they would do it the opposite way.
Three holographic, three hologrammers will review your application.
Three avatars.
The future.
All right.
These will all in March.
So if that's it, we'll have um, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Uh, so moved.
And second?
Seconded.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, none. Okay, great. See you all next month.
Everybody, yeah. See you soon.
Take care.